For the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your public purpose stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Join me for a moment of silence, please. Thank you, you can be seated. All right, item number one is the approval of the agenda. And I'll, I'll move that.
Second.
Motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any discussion or changes? Seeing none, all right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same aye. Motion passes five zero. Uh, onto the consent agenda, items two through nine constitute a consent agenda of routine action items to be considered by one motion. Uh, number two is approval of amendments to the January seventh, two thousand twenty five meeting. Number three is the approval of claims, number four from Human Resources, Melissa Thomas, approval of memorandum of personnel transactions, the hiring process, approval requested the authorized county position and the approval of overlap two employees and one budgeted position secondary roads. Uh, number five from Deputy Commissioner of Elections, Stephen Huffmeyer, uh, to receive the appointment of Brad Griffin to the WIT Director District Two. Number six, uh, from Board Supervisors and myself, the approval of the two thousand twenty-five liaison assignments. Number seven, from Building Services, Kenny Smits, approval of items to be auctioned per personal property disposition policy. And number eight, Board of Administration, uh, Karen James, through lifting tax suspensions for petitioners who failed to rectify their income or income that does not qualify for continued tax suspension. Number nine, from County Treasurer, Tina Bertrand, uh, received the semi-annual report for period ending twelve thirty-one, two thousand twenty-four. And I'll, I'll move it.
Second.
All right. Moved by Bittenger, second by Nelson, any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, same sign. Seeing none, motion passes five zero. All right, onto the regular agenda, number ten, uh, built from Building Services, Kenny Smits with a update on the old LEC at four oh seven, seventh street. So, go ahead Kenny.
Kenny Smits, Building Services Director, uh, thought I'd come before the board and give you a little bit of an update, uh, on our old LEC. Uh, I'm gonna start with some background. The, uh, the LEC located at four oh seven, seventh street is considered an Iowa DNR less site. It has been, um, it has been under a, um, UST fund, and what a UST fund is, an underground storage tank fund, um, from the DNR for several years. Um, some of you may have remembered hearing about a remediation project, uh, for a benzene, uh, underneath, uh, the ground of that facility. That remediation project began around two thousand fifteen, uh, when we installed some equipment that actually pulled benzene out of the ground, uh, and captured it. That project, uh, was about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, uh, of a one million dollar cap that we had, uh, state funding for, uh, through the DNR. In August of two thousand twenty, uh, that remediation was discontinued. Uh, the site was, uh, then reclassified and listed as no orders present, um, but continue monitoring. In November of two thousand twenty-three, we plugged fifteen of those monitoring wells or those capturing wells, um, that had been dug, uh, that were, uh, taking that product out of the ground. And we were done notified that the site will remain classified as a high-risk site. And, uh, at some point, it could be reclassified at, at no risk. However, to accomplish that, uh, there is another well receptor, which is a geothermal well that is owned by the Pioneer Bank across the alley. To get the LEC site turned to no risk, that geothermal well would need to be plugged. Um, I'm under the understanding that that well is no longer in service. And we have tried and are communicating, um, with the Pioneer Bank owners to move forward on, uh, getting that well of theirs plugged. I have offered to, uh, incur the, the county would incur the expense of plugging that well for them, and we would oversee that project, uh, so we could get this done. If we were not able to get that well plugged, the county would be required to continue monitoring our site, uh, forever into the future to an unknown date. So that is why it's, uh, really important that we get that done. In, uh, June of twenty-four, uh, we hired a contractor, EOC, formerly Impact Seven G, to do a hazardous material and asbestos study of our facility. That was eleven thousand seven hundred and twenty-dollar, uh, contract, uh, to come in and take sampling, uh, inside the facility and identify any items that would be considered hazardous materials. Uh, they have done that. We have not, they did identify one area, uh, that was in some window glazing, um, that had a round, uh, or just slightly under two percent asbestos-containing materials that will have to be abated. The good news is there's not a lot of windows with that glazing in there. Other good news is, uh, the hazardous materials, uh, that were present, um, we've been working on, uh, internally on, uh, capturing those materials. Those range anything from, uh, a thermostat, um, an exit light, uh, uh, simple items, uh, just like a, an old light fixture with an old ballast in it. Although we've completed an upgrade on our lighting, um, if anything was missed, we'd go in and that would be a hazardous material if it had an old, old, uh, ballast in it. So, um, their study covered a lot of items, um, and it was quite extensive. It even, uh, listed things like, um, some, some old hazardous material needles that were in a tub that the Sheriff's Department had not yet moved out and shipped off, so it's medical items like that. So, um, we're taking care of those things, uh, even old TV monitors, um, those are electronics, those are considered hazardous materials. So things like that, we're, we're taking care of, uh, getting removed. In December, uh, of this year, um, we completed a, uh, well, we discovered firstly, um, our emergency generator fed by our diesel tank, which is in the ground at that facility, that fed the emergency generator, diesel fuel. We discovered, uh, that had not been registered with the DNR when it was installed. What that meant was they weren't aware it was there, uh, and we had not been paying annual, uh, fees, uh, to have that tank in place, uh, since nineteen eighty-six, when it was installed. What I had done was I had actually tried to start the process of filling out a form to have that tank removed, because that's going to be part of our demolition process. That's when we discovered there were no permits attached with it, no annual fees. And all I can say about getting a diesel tank removed underground with the DNR is it's very difficult. Melissa Thomas has been part of the several meetings, multiple meetings that we've had, uh, just trying to get this tank removed. Part of just, you would think it would sound simple, but it's not. We are many forms deep in trying to get this done. One of the actions we had to complete before we can even fill out a form for removal is we have to firstly register it, because it's never been registered. Then we have to do another form to, uh, temporarily close it. That's where you remove the fuel, you close it. Then you have to do a permanent closure form, but you can't do a permanent closure form until you do sampling under the ground to make sure your tank isn't leaking. We've completed that drill sampling, um, and so that brings us to about where we are today. I'm gonna give you a little bit of background on the Law Enforcement Center agreement with the city. We have a twenty-eight agreement for the land. And the way that agreement reads is the LEC must be demoed and the property turned over to Sioux City within eighteen months of the new LEC occupancy date. The new LEC occupancy date was September sixteenth of two thousand twenty-four. So our turnover date to the city by contract would be March fifteenth of twenty-six. Demolition estimated, just an off-the-cuff estimated cost, uh, to demo the facility is eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That is excluding architectural fees, engineering fees, um, abatement fees, uh, and any other closing costs, diesel tank removal and other closing costs. So we're estimating, I'm estimating that around one point one million dollars. We currently, uh, do not have a CIP item for that facility, that'll be coming to you as a two thousand twenty-six CIP, um, which I'm going to be asking for, and I encourage that we, uh, get done as soon as we can. We have incurred, uh, several thousands of dollars of costs to date. We did the, the study I talked about was eleven thousand seven hundred dollars. The well drilling number I don't actually have with me. But we have been incurring those costs and I have been charging them to the LEC operating budget, um, which is almost depleted. And so going forward, we're going to need a CIP to, uh, place those costs under. I do have a contract actually coming before you probably next week. It is from Olson Associates, it's been reviewed by CMBA Architects. It will be for a site survey, um, and a utilities identification. And so what this, uh, what this study with Olson Associates would do, and it's seven thousand four hundred dollars, is it'll, it'll, of course, complete a survey, but it'll also identify all the utilities to the facility, where they can be capped or discontinued. And then that information will be provided, uh, in the specifications as we go forward and get bids on the demolition of the facility itself. Any questions that I can ask, uh, answer for anyone?
Kenny, how long would that take, once they start to demo, to demolition it? What, what's the process, how long? A month, two months?
I don't exactly know the process, I know the bid process is probably going to take, um, or the inner workings from now until it goes out to bid is probably going to be a four-month process, once that started and goes into motion. I am estimating the demo itself, and I don't have an ass expertise, but I think myself it might take about three months.
Questions? Thank you for the foresight and
Thank you.
planning for this, thank you Kenny. All right, number eleven on the agenda from County Auditor, Michelle Scaff, and I'll turn it over to Auditor Scaff.
Thank you. So the first item I have on the agenda is to discuss, and I'm requesting approval for additional funding to update the auditor's conference room, and in addition to that, to update the office in the auditor's office, which would be my office. In two thousand twenty-three, in November, there was six thousand dollars allocated out of gaming to update the conference room. That work has not began. So I did, uh, speak with Kenny and I've reached out for an estimate to do painting and some repairs of some of the, I don't know what you call them, where the, the heating, uh, what are those Kenny, that go up, the, the water pipe things, there's some damage to some of those. And the painting estimate was a little bit higher than I thought it would be. And in addition to that, um, since we're going to be painting, the thought was potentially getting new carpet for the auditor's conference room and the auditor's office. After speaking with Kenny, uh, we thought it would be better to have this as a CIP. Originally, I did request for this out of CIP, but it was changed to gaming at the budget hearings that year. And I'm asking for an additional fourteen thousand to be allocated towards those two remodels that would cover carpeting, painting, uh, possibly furniture, if there's any money left over, network, I, I met with someone from IT, there's a few network cables that are needed. I've put a work order in to have the electrical assessed, there's no electrical outlet in the auditor's office. There's electrical boxes, but there's not an outlet, the box goes to a cord that was hooked up to the cubicles. And I'm just talking about the single individual office. And then there's a need to move some of the electrical in the conference room so that we can put two monitors on the wall. So if we were to change this to CIP funding, then that's a little more flexible if it's, if there's more funding needed, or if there's funding that's left over, it can go towards other projects. So the request is to move the six thousand from gaming to CIP and to, uh, put an additional fourteen thousand towards the project there to complete those two rooms in the auditor's office.
Dr. Scaff, was there any discussion, I know when I took a tour with you, was there a discussion of moving your guys' office to a different floor of the courthouse?
Yes, um, I did consider moving the auditor's office to the third floor. After assessing that, I didn't think it would be, uh, a place that we could hold elections as far as when we have absentee voting, it would be too difficult for the public to access that third floor, so we decided to keep it on as is.
Is there a reason the work wasn't started last year? Was it just timing?
I think it was just that the Building Services was busy with the LEC project, and it just... Kenny, would you like to speak to that?
Yes, there's, there's, there were several CIP projects that were placed on hold due to the business at the LEC. So we've, we've got some of those, uh, that are, that are priorities that I've been trying to get set up to get moving on. Just to clarify, uh, the conference room and office renovation did start somewhat. And I did draw plans, so there was some work done in the back, done in the background months ago that I had drafted plans on and was ready to move forward with the project when time came available. Some of that work has been started, um, and so, uh, I would say that this does need to be returned to a CIP, which it originally was.
I'll move it.
Second.
All right. Motion by Young, second by Nelson. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. All right, motion passes five zero.
Thank you.
All right, item B is discussion and direction on budget.
Put on my budget director hat. So this item I'm bringing to you because I need some direction on entering the budget. So we, I did send an email out asking for CIP requests and improvement requests. So just for the backup material for the new members, a CIP, um, request is something that the departments have a need for improving their department that would, uh, most likely be borrowed through GO bonds. And improvement request is basically additional staffing or a change in the, um, the grade that the employee is paid at, so it affects the payroll. So that's the difference between those two items. In the past, I think that there's been various different ways in which, um, this has been budgeted. Sometimes it's been embedded within the budget and then taken out. Some, in the way past, I think that there was a committee of people who would review all of the CIP requests to see which ones would move forward. So, um, this year, um, in the, in the past, Dennis had sent out the requests for the CIPs and improvements. So when I sent these out, I did receive several of them from many departments. And the total amount of CIP dollars that has been requested is three million seven hundred and forty-seven thousand one hundred and forty-five dollars. So basically, you know, this is pretty high amount, we don't usually have GO bonds that would be that amount. So there's gonna have to be some sort of a process to determine how these are gonna move forward, if there's gonna be a five-year plan, or if there's gonna be a plan. Some of the departments said they could do things across two fiscal years instead of one. So my question, um, on the CIP and the improvement requests, improvement requests, just for reference, we have five departments who have asked for various different options of additional employees or changing the employee grade to a higher paid grade. So, um, I haven't got, I haven't calculated those out yet. The question is, should, would the board like me to embed all of these numbers into the budget, which Dennis would say the worst-case scenario is we're gonna have this much money that, that we need if we're gonna do everything, knowing that these will most likely have to be determined, are we gonna do this this year, are we gonna kick this down the road and do it later on? I did speak with Chairman Bittenger and we are planning on putting the CIP requests on the agenda next week, if the board desires. And we've sent emails out to all of the department heads that have CIP requests to come to the board meeting next week to present their CIP projects, so that you can get an overview of what it is and why they need it. In the meantime, I have to enter our, our data into the Department of Management, you know, to come up with our levy, our beginning rate. So, um, with this three million dollars, uh, we need to determine how much of that we wanna start embedded, or do we wanna add it? The way the budget goes, as some of you know, is you can always lower the, the levy, but you can increase it at a certain point. So as of March fifteenth, when the auditor sends our notice out, we have, we have our maximum asking amount, and we can go down, but we can't go up. So if we don't have this in the budget, we can't increase it later on. So it's important we identify what we want in there. If you'd like to receive this, I guess I should have passed this out originally. These are the CIP requests that come up to the three point seven million.
I'll move to receive. Yeah, move to receive. All right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes five zero.
And I don't expect that we discuss these today, because that's gonna be on for next week, but that's a reference for you. The other thing that can be considered is, uh, we have the fiscal year twenty-five CIP, which has not been borrowed. Generally, these projects have all been approved by the board and not borrowed, those are usually borrowed, I think, in May, is that about right Karen? So in May, we, we need to borrow for our debt that we currently are obligated. And that amount comes to, well, six hundred thousand plus today, we'll add the twenty that was just approved. If you'd like to receive this form, um, this is...
Move to receive. Second. Motion by Bittenger, second by Dietrich, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same, all opposed, same sign. Motion passes five zero.
So last week you approved for UMB to be the financial, it was called advisor to the board. So we may need to reach out to them and determine this six hundred thousand is, can we add to that and maybe cover any of the CIPs? Last year, or fiscal year twenty-four, we borrowed eight hundred thousand, so six hundred is pretty low from what I see historically that has been borrowed, which isn't a bad thing. But we are looking at some pretty high expenses moving forward.
Good evening. Tina Bertrand, Liberty County Treasurer, I just wanna add a few little details to some of Michelle's explanations, um, in terms of what we've done in the past for the CIP loan. Usually it has been, in the past, a CIP loan that we go out and we bid for, it has been usually in May. Last year, we did actually do it earlier, because there was the new requirement for the auditor to send out some of that levy information. So I think one of the things to keep in mind, and I don't know this year if it's still the same issue, but, um, it was backed up quite a few months earlier. I think we did it last year in, um, actually March was the, that was the, um, the way we did it. Um, and it's a non, it's a non-taxable interest, um, loan, so it's a little bit different than just going out and asking, you know, when we, when we put that bid out. Last year was the first year, I'm gonna tell you that since I've been here, that Dennis actually did it on his own. I said that usually has gone through the treasurer's office, because, um, I was responsible for actually signing some of those documents. I'm not sure what happened last year, other than the fact that he was very adamant that we needed to get it out earlier so that we could have that levy amount, or at least the amount of information in there. And I think that was part of the reason why it was a little bit lower, was because we had a mark that we were trying to, um, hit, and as a result, there were several other CIP requests that were included, um, that had been, that had been approved in the previous budget sessions, um, the previous year, that never made it to the, uh, CIP loan, which is why it was significantly less. And I do believe, at least I know for the treasurer's office, that you'll be seeing my requests that were actually supposed to be in last year's CIP loan, that wasn't. And what the approval process was for that, um, I haven't been part of that, and I think in the past, everything that has been reviewed during the budget session has always gone to the loan, so it has never been an issue. So I'm not exactly sure, and I know that I'm not the only department that had CIP projects that were part of that, that were not approved. The, is it UMB, was a firm that we, uh, that came in yes, last week. If that's a new approach that the board has, I mean, obviously, that's, that's a decision you guys can make. But just historically, that's how they've always done the CIP loans, at least I can go back in my files and go back to at least two thousand fifteen. So if you want anymore, any other kind of historical data, I mean, we do, I do have it.
So, and I, I do believe that what was borrowed last March would have been the eight hundred thousand, that would have been the fiscal year twenty-four borrows, the six hundred thousand is what we're looking at now. And I do know, I, I believe I know why Dennis would have wanted that, because this six hundred thousand, the first payments will be coming out in fiscal year twenty-six, and so we need to know what that payment amount is, and that is part of the levy that would be published for that maximum tax asking. So I'm, that does make sense to me, thank you.
That, that we actually backed, we, we, we have to almost back that process up, which actually kinda leads into the whole CIP process, if that's a number out there that if we're getting too late in our budget, kinda process to be able to, because interest rates are gonna matter to us in terms of what our payments are gonna be, because I believe we make two payments a year, if, if I'm correct on that, um, on those loans, and we pay them off over a five-year, five-year time period.
I think there's one principal payment and two interest payments.
Yeah, I'd have to look back through the detail in terms of what our, what our schedule is, so.
Yeah, I'm with that, I was looking at the Department of Management, they almost suggest, um, November, December, reviewing CIP improvement requests, I have that, I think, for that, for the bidding process, yeah.
In this change, I think last year it happened, it had, did have a significant impact, and I'm not gonna deny that. Um, I think we fell a little kinda short on being able to kinda finalize what it was, and I don't know with some of the other legislative changes, how that impacts our levy and what our maximums are, and, you know, I just think that there was a lot of different nuances there, um, that changed how we actually approached it. And so it is a good time to take a look at it. Um, I know we've had the conversation in other board meetings about just addressing our CIP projects slightly different than we have been in the past anyway.
Yeah.
So. Any other questions, let me know.
All right. Thank you Tina. All right. Thank you, Tina. Oh, microphone? You turn your microphone on.
I misspoke when I spoke about the LEC demo and I said 2026 CIP. It would be a 2025 borrowing.
Okay.
Just to clarify.
Oh, 25? Okay. Because that was not budgeted if that's the $1 million or...
Yeah. Yes, it is. And I can't, I'm not the finance director. I don't know what Dennis was doing, but he was aware of this project was coming forward. So I can't tell you what Dennis did or didn't do in the background. I can only tell you what the agreement with the city is and what we need to do. So I can't help you with the borrowing, other than to say, I think, as, as we go through the CIP and you hear from the other departments, as there's requests next week, one thing to keep in mind is that if I have a, if I or another department that have a CIP project that's been approved and/or funded by the board, although you've given me the funds and say, it's okay, we're going to do a CIP on this and we're going to borrow the funds, I still can't go out and spend the money without coming to you and asking, do you approve the dollar amounts? That's just the first step. The second step is whatever that project is, you're required, we are required as department heads to get bids for that. And depending on what those amounts are, Iowa Chapter 26 bid law could come into play. And that opens up a whole new ballgame on agenda items and the time it takes to get a project, project done. Matthew knows what that process looks like. He's seen to me, seen me come to the board with just one project and spend six weeks at each board meeting to get through that process. So you have to have a hearing. That's just the start of it. Public notifications. And so, yeah. Thank you.
So Kenny, is it next week that you'll be asking for CIP approval of the demo project?
Yes, I think I better because we, we can't have anything holding up this project at this point.
So that means the $600,000 number we're talking about for FY '25 CIP loan is really 1.7 million?
Yes.
What's the timeline for us to adjust this number? Is it just before the...
Well, this is the borrowing that Tina had mentioned. So I think we probably better solidify this number like soon and start looking into it and deciding if UMB or the treasurer would be responsible for reaching out for those GO bonds.
Yeah. When we do it, it's actually a, a CIP loan. It's not actually a GO bond when we do it that way. So it is a little bit different. And the authority, and I don't have all the numbers memorized, but I believe the authority, the county can go out and do a C, a loan as long as it's under, it's under a certain dollar amount. And I'm, I'm not exactly sure if that cap is 2 million, 5 million, or what that number is. But like I said, just historically, that's what we've done. And they've always been right around that 1 million to 1 million and a half, 1.2. I think we've had a couple that were like 900,000. 600,000 was pretty low. It was a pretty low number. And even the 800,000 that we actually loaned last, so we would have, we would have done the capital loan in March of 2024. And I always get mixed up on the dates if that's the 2024 CIP or the 2025 CIP, because I'm always off a fiscal year. But I believe the requests for that $800,000 loan during the budget, you know, so like the requests that you have right now, that you're kind of looking at, was closer to 1.9 million dollars. And only 800,000 actually made it into the loan. And again, that's the approval process in terms of what was, what decisions were made to identify those, that $800,000, $1,000 mark. So if Kenny had something in there that didn't get approved, it, you know, like I said, I know I had projects that were in there that didn't make the $800,000 loan. I think there were a couple other departments that had the same thing. If it's, you're going to add, if you can add the 1.1 million that we're talking about, if we need to have it, that doesn't need to be in the levy for the 600,000 that you're talking about, that the auditor's talking about.
Kenny said fiscal year '25. Yes, that would be that. And so what I've looked at is, I thought these were GO bonds or these were because we can levy the debt service levy on this amount. So that 800,000, we did have the debt service on that.
But they were capital loans. They, they weren't bonds. They're loans. It's, it's slightly different.
Okay. Maybe it's logged as something different on the Department of Management site? Because I believe that that does say GO on the debt schedule on there.
Okay. We can look at...
So maybe it's just a terminology that I need to check into on there?
Yeah. I mean, we, and we can look into it probably more tomorrow if we need to in terms of, and again, the 800,000 Dennis kind of did on his own. So I don't, not sure if he went up for bonds, but I don't know how he would do the bonds through a loan. Because it was, I did see the loan documentation and it was still just a loan.
Well, what I'm understanding right now is that that 1.1 million for the LEC, Kenny is requesting under fiscal year '25 because the work has to begin before fiscal year '26 starts. And so if we want to look at the CIPs for fiscal year '26, is the work going to start before fiscal year '26 begins? Is it going to start before July 1st? That's where the fiscal year '25 funds would come into play. So I don't know if the work in your office, if the board wanted to consider that.
Again, I guess the $800,000 loan that you have for the capital loan, if you haven't actually picked your projects, you're, I mean, somehow or another, that number was identified? And I'm pretty sure...
No, the $800,000 is identified in specific projects. I have a list. We can, I can show it. It's all work that's been done and allocated and approved. And that 800,000 is allocated to projects that are underway. The 600,000 is projects that some of them may have started, but most likely, most of them haven't. And that money needs to be borrowed still so those projects can start.
And those were CIP projects that were presented to the board during the last budget cycle, right?
For the most part, yes. But some of them were multiple fiscal years are paying for projects. Like we have a county PC that has been paid from past fiscal years also.
Again, this is part of the CIP process that we have within the county. They can get a little confusing because when you do have multiple-year stuff and every, and it's coming forward every year and a bond or a CIP loan is requested on an annual basis, then you're having to break it down into those annual looks and how that process and how it gets actually presented to the board so that all the board, you know, and, so that everybody can understand and the board, the supervisors can understand what they're approving and how that actually wraps into the budgeting process can be slightly different. Because I would agree with Auditor Scaff is that there are definitely ones that are scheduled over five or six years, especially PC replacements. I mean, that's something that's pretty typical to have an ongoing replacement cycle. So you're going to have those kind of things every year. And then there's going to be those kind of refreshment things. If it's, I need to repaint a, an office space or re-carpet somebody or, you know, an office space or something like that. Those are things that sometimes can come in. We're going to do it now. We won't do that, we won't do that office again for another 10, 15, 20 years. So the $600,000 that were CIP projects that should have been presented, you know, there's a, a group of those that were presented last year during the budget process, a group of them that are part of just kind of annual replacement cycles or whatever, whatever they spread out over several fiscal years. That $600,000, if we do it as part of a CIP loan, as part of, and, and it does go against debt service, as I understand it. It's just, it's a loan versus bonds, okay? And they are just a little bit different on how you actually receive the funds and how you actually, how you actually, I guess, acquire the funds. I don't know if I'm using the right terminology there. But how that rate impacts, you know, because you're going to pay interest on that and how that impacts your budget. You know, you, you'll need to have that information because that interest is going to impact your FY '26 budget, your FY '27 budget. Because it's going to be, if, if you're doing the CIP loan process, it's going to be a five-year process. Because you're going to pay that loan down, that debt down in that five-year time period. So adding a 1.1 million dollar project to it, I don't know where that stands on your, you know, from a budgeting perspective. I don't under, I, I don't necessarily know how that impacts the 2026 budget. So it's part of your budget process this year and part of your levy process this year. Yes.
Well, it probably means we have to come up with $340,000 for FY '26 debt service levy, approximately, if it's over five years, not counting interest.
And then I guess, well, you have to have it done by March of 2026?
Yes.
Yeah. So you, you have it all done in FY '26 anyway? That's not going to span more than one fiscal year. So. I, I guess that the confusing part is you get the $600,000 that was presented last year, you know, last March, last February, you know, that, you know, so some, and just for my own, and maybe I'm just not quite up to speed on it. When I hear those, I, I would expect that to be part of FY '25, not FY '26. So we're actually approving CIP projects or we're talking about CIP projects a year and a half before we actually loan or go get them or procure the money for it, is the process that we're using. And there, it gets a little lost in, in, I guess, communication in terms of we present them. As a department head, I presented in February of, you know, I would, I would have done mine probably February of 2023, expecting it to be, you know, in the March 2024 loan, I guess, to go forward in FY '25. But if you're not part of that process, you know, like Kenny was saying, you have to come, you know, there's a process there where we have to approach the board. Say, okay, now we, we asked for the CIP. Now I need to get to this point to bring another number back to you so you know how much money you can put in that, all of those notes. So backing that, that process up so that we have a clear understanding is helpful.
So I guess for a direction that I will need is, one, our fiscal year '25 borrowing, I'm up to 1.72 million, including the LEC, the 600,000 that's been allocated. And then, two, we have the fiscal year '26 CIP request, which would be reduced by 1.1 because that's on that list. And that would include all of the projects that you're talking about in the treasurer's office and all of the other projects from, that have not been covered in the past. Because I do have a list of the fiscal year '24 requests of what was never borrowed for. And those are some of those that, that Treasurer Bertrand referenced for her office. So if I were to enter all of these so that we can kind of see how it looks for fiscal year '26, then we'd have the worst-case scenario. And maybe that wasn't the way it was done in the past, but we have to figure out how to do it moving forward. And then the other thing is if, when the departments present next week, they can tell you about the CIP requests. And then when they come back for their budget hearings, potentially, the board could review those at the budget hearings for that department to determine if they're going to leave that CIP request in there or not. So you have a upfront kind of description as information only next week. And then during your budget hearing, it would be discussed for action when you approve if you're going to reduce the budget by anything or move it forward to a future fiscal year. Just throwing out ideas to try to make it so that it works for everyone.
Yeah. Dan?
Dan Heiselman, Conservation Director. I guess the only request I have is that list you refer to of the 24 CIP projects that have not been funded or didn't make the list. If you could let us know via email or something before next week, I would like to know if my project that I've been putting in for several years and the director before me is on that list that is unfunded? Because that's going to impact what I requested on the CIP that I put in this year. So I'd just like to get rid of that confusion. And I guess that's why I asked that this process be redone. And I think we see why. We probably need to take a new look at this. So I appreciate anything you can do to help us do that. So.
And, oh. Right. So, so just so to let, I talked a lot to Scaff. My goal is, and the board weighed in this, my goal is let's work together, get through this year. Let's get into March. And I want to sit down with elected officials and department heads and let's, let's build the plan. Let's build a plan, concrete plan, dates, times, processes. So going into the fall here, we can get ahead of all this. And I was told, Michelle, that, you know, me, that for next year, we can try to have a process going into the late fall, have a process kind of known and be ready. But I think for right now, next week was kind of our goal was to begin to, begin to have an upfront process, informational process. And then during the budget, like you said, during the budget, we would kind of look at each individual CIP when the elected official or department head comes to us during the budget. But I, I do agree. I think we have to create a policy and some, like a pipeline of what do we need to do? What's the procedures that everyone can follow? But, but to answer your question, Michelle, is you, you want to know from us, do we want to put the max in to have the worst-case scenario? I, I think in years past, I mean, Matthew, you know more, I think Dennis had always instructed us, we would do the worst-case scenario to see what was the max and work back from that. But what would you, what's your thoughts on that?
Well, there's a difference here. The worst-case scenario would be the FY '25 actual borrowing. I don't think we should be putting in all of the other CIP, the five-year CIP into that because that affects our tax rate. And if we don't know if the projects are multi-year or not, then we would be committing within a couple of weeks to borrow money that, for projects that won't start. And there's probably rules against that. So there's two different things here. There's the plan, the, the five-year CIP or however many years. And then there's the FY '25 debt service levy or FY '26 debt service levy, which is affected by the FY '25 CIP projects. So, no, I don't think that the, going down from, you said originally 3.7, so without the demo project, it'd be approximately $2.6 million. I think those projects would, we need to know if those are being suggested as start soon, start this upcoming fiscal year. And if so, we need to know that those are requests to be put into the FY '25 CIP loan. And those need to be discussed more urgently because the, the other projects, the precedence has been, it, you approve a plan annually, but that plan changes as far as which projects move up and which projects are kicked back.
So if the department heads and elected officials could bring us that next week, I'd be, but you know, is it multi-year, one year, when do they need it? That would be helpful.
Okay, I'm back again. Since my previous life before being a treasurer, I did a lot of CIP planning, five-year, 10-year plans. It is always in the best interest of every public entity that I've worked with to have the CIP plan, take a look at your financing if it, and not just your finances, so what kind of money you have available that you can actually allocate to a capital improvement plan. And yes, it is something that actually gets managed every year because projects move up, projects move back. You can decide on an annual basis during the budget season or during your budgeting process, how much is going to go to debt service. So a comprehensive, and I am a huge advocate for a comprehensive capital improvement plan. And, you know, we've had our challenges. I think we've done a great job as a county addressing a lot of our technology issues. But we do have a lot of old and aging facilities within the county. And I think there's a lot of firefighting mode going on, trying to repair things. And I think there's a lot of firefighting mode going on, trying to repair things. I mean, Truss for Hoyt and the upper levels, Building Services had to have, you know, fireproofing bricks were falling off and coming through acoustical ceiling tiles. So, I mean, those are the things that you have to address on an emergency basis, which is, just drives your costs up. And you'll never get out of that situation if you don't take the time to actually do the plan. And know going into it, there's not going to be enough money to do everything. And there are going to be decisions that have to be made. But, you know, facilities are built to last, you know, that forty, fifty, hundred-year life cycles. You know, systems within a building, so roof systems that have to be replaced in ten, fifteen, twenty-year life cycles. Operational needs can change in a five-year cycle. And so it's always difficult when you're trying to handle operational needs in a fifty-year building and trying to make sure that you're keeping up with it. And again, the county's done a great job at keeping up on some of the technologies and some of the other items, working through, making sure ADA access is provided in some of the real critical ones. But with the age of the facilities, it's time for a full, comprehensive plan. And I know Kenny does a really good job at trying to keep up on a lot of it. And he's very, very helpful at coming out and helping, trying to assess what you might need. I know IT department's also great at coming out and looking at some, you know, adding IT drops here and there when you need them. But there's the back end of that is you need power for some of that stuff, you increase HVAC systems and some of that stuff. So, I mean, it can be a downward spiral on these, on these older facilities. So I'm going to say it again, because I've said it before. It's time for this, it's time for this county to really look at their CIP projects holistically, to have a better handle on your financial and fiscal approach to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. So have me. So you still need direction, what, how, the amount?
Well, I know what we need for fiscal year twenty-five borrow. So I'll work with Tina to determine more information on that.
Okay.
And then as far as the fiscal year twenty-six amounts, those will come forward for information next week.
Correct. Okay.
And as far as the improvement requests, would you like me to enter all of those into the budget, which is the employees, so that you can, I, I can enter them as a line by themselves? And then when that department comes in, I believe my email said that they should come and talk about their improvement requests next week as well. So that'll be five departments.
And you said that there's five of those, you said, correct?
There's five departments.
Five of them, of course, yeah.
But it involves eighteen employee changes. Or additions or changes.
Mm-hmm.
We haven't seen, excuse me, what those employee additions are, or what those departments are.
And that's what they'll come next week. I'm, I'm more than happy to tell you.
Sure.
I don't have a nice sheet, if you'd like me to just run through them real quick. So we have economic development changing a clerk from grade four to five, sheriff, eight additional correctional officers, treasurers, two, two clerk twos to a clerk three, and five clerk twos to senior clerks. EMS changing, oh, all part-time EMS individuals from a point oh five employee to a point two five employee. And changing a clerk two to a clerk three. And Veterans Affairs changing a individual from grade five to grade six.
But we could put all those in there and then decide later if we want to take them out or not.
Yes.
Well, if it, I think it's all the same in the end. If we can look at it and take it out anyway, lumping it all together gives us the worst case, like you say. And, you know, we can approve or not based on that. So it's looking at it one way or the other, if it's just all lumped together, right?
Yeah, I would say put them in, and just we can always subtract, yeah.
Agreed.
Yeah.
Very good, direction received.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Autor Scaff, for that.
Mr. Chair, was there anyone approved to call in? I have an individual that's attempting to call in.
Yes.
There, there is? Okay, I, I will answer next.
Should be two, yeah, I believe, calling in, yeah, should be two, yeah.
My dad said that the, Leo said that the voicemail is disabled for this extension for the number you gave him, so he can't get in. So.
There was a Brian, it said.
Right, yeah.
I, I just have to accept it, I just wasn't aware it was coming in.
Leo Yocum was asking for.
Right, yeah, because IT told me that we could have, there was an extra couple of lines that had been changed. Is it still the one? Because. Okay, all right, when we get ready, I'll just, I'll just call on my phone, that's fine. We'll just do that. Okay, okay, all right, yeah, so they can go forward. All right, so number twelve for myself, it's the approval of resolution to transfer control of the Salix, Salix, excuse me, Drainage District to the City of Salix. This was, I put this on so we could have that discussion, kind of a final discussion or beginning discussion of this. I know City Salix has asked for that to be transferred over to them. And so we wanted to get this on the agenda so we could talk about that. So with that, you can see the resolutions in the background. It's, the language has been approved through V and K and then working with City of Salix. And so this is the language that we need for, for the resolution. And so with that, I want to open it up for discussion, any comments and discussion about that. So we'll start with the board, and go ahead, if we have any comments or thoughts on that, and then we'll go, we'll go to public too for that, so go ahead.
So essentially, our three options are either the, the county board can continue to run it. We can hand it off at any time, either to the City of Salix, because they're greater than the twenty-five percent threshold, or a trusteeship could be created, and there is a process that would do that. In my opinion, I would like to see this drainage district be handed off and go down to the more, more local level to be run, whether that is Salix trusteeship, I am indifferent. I just, you get involved with some of these drainage districts, these levying districts, and I think it's better when it's closer to the people that are using it and control it and see how the money's spent. And, and so especially when you're dealing with the City of Salix, when you have actually a lot of people, it's probably almost as many people as any of the districts in Woodbury County as far as cumulative people. I just think it would be better for all of us and for future boards if they're not running. So that being said, I'm open to either of those two options and look forward to discussion from anybody else and from the public, so thank you.
All right, so, you know, it's in District Five, and I went and I drove around that drainage district, you know, as it sits. And, and good on Salix, you know, you got a five-year agreement with Farmers District to basically pump the water in the same way that you have in the past. So I see no hurry or rush to, in my opinion, to hand it over at this point. I talked to Diane, and the, and she can correct me on this, I mean, she gave me, you know, the information of this. But we, as the Board of Supervisors, we are responsible for, I believe at this time, twelve drainage districts. And there's two within the county that are the farmers and the Garrettson that are controlled by a Board of Trustees. Those Board of Trustees are a cross-section of landowners in that, in those districts. And, you know, in my opinion, I feel that a Board of Trustees or at this time, or, you know, the Board of Supervisors keeping control of that. You know, I've talked to Patrick Mao as well, and also Brian Young. You know, there's no, as far as I saw, there was no set work to be done yet. It appears, I think, the next step, okay, and I, you know, I see you shaking your head, but that could, I could be wrong on that. I looked through the, and I talked to Patrick Mao and Brian as well. But, you know, as far as I see, I think they, from what I was told, the next step is that they're going to assess, and assess is the wrong word, the, against the properties in that district. As far as my opinion, I see the major players involved, I'd like to see it go to a Board of Trustees or it'll stay with the Board of Supervisors for now.
Chairman Vitter, could you add the phone call?
Okay. Oh, sure. Oh, sure. Oh, sure, it's Brian, Brian, are you there?
I am.
Yes, can you just mute your phone, please, until we're ready for you here?
Oh, sure, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Okay, all right, okay, all right. Any other board with that, all right, all right, let's do, let's just open up for public, so anybody from the public, or, I know Mayor's here, and Patrick, anybody else that wants to speak, and, or just, you know.
I'll go first, Kevin Nelson, Mayor of Salix, four oh six Willow Street. And I'm going to speak in two ways, one, as a landowner within the Salix Drainage District, because I am, and then also representing the Salix City Council. I emailed all five of you, along with all five City Council members, a couple of emails this past week. The petition from November twenty twenty-two, yes, it's been over two years, was very clear that the Salix City Council wanted control of the Drainage District when it was created, when it was officially wanted to be created. It was very clear, and it was signed by all three petitioners, Greg Yocum, Denise Burkhart, and myself. There is no mystery here. It was the plan from the very, very beginning and all along. And I've been consistent and repeating this for two years, that the City of Salix wanted control. The City of Salix spent thousands and thousands of dollars for the engineers, for lawyers, for the bond that took two years, because you guys dragged your feet for two years. All of that was only absorbed by the City of Salix. And then to say like, oh, well, there's nothing needing to be done, like, yes, there is. Did you talk to anybody on the Salix City Council? I doubt it. Did you talk to me? I tried to call you and it went straight to voicemail, and you never called me back. I'm going to read their memo that the Salix City Council signed, once again, saying that they want control of this. "We, the Salix City Council, strongly request that the Woodbury County Supervisors approve the resolution to transfer control of the Salix Drainage District to the Salix City Council. Salix City limits make up seventy-one percent of the Salix Drainage District, which is more than the twenty-five percent requirement." Then it goes on to describe four six eight point three two two. "We believe that the Salix City Council is best suited to manage the Salix City Drainage District and are ready and willing to take on management of the district. Signed, Denise Burkhart, Council Member. Karen Allen, Council Member. Nick Black, Council Member. Emily Clayton, Council Member. Cindy Von Alken, Council Member." They represent hundreds of people that want this thing formed so that they can get the drainage districts cleaned out so when it rains, we don't have our houses destroyed, Dave.
Okay, Mr. Nelson, I'm going to ask you to please show respect for this. We understand this is very passionate, okay? And I appreciate you can bring all the passion you want, but, but you can continue.
And that was that respect shown to the City of Salix from Dave Dietrich. You say that there's no projects needed to be done when your engineer report that you approved last month said that there was.
Okay. I would, I would believe that Mr. Dietrich does respect the city. So we're going to decide any personal, personal differences, and I agree that you guys have worked hard on this. But I'm going to ask you to please respect and, and respect the supervisors up here in there. Continue on, please, okay? Continue.
I am a landowner in Salix. I've seen how bad flooding can hit Smithland and Correctionville and people up in McCook Lake when things, nothing was done because no projects were needed. I bet those people would disagree when they say, don't do anything for drainage, because nothing is a problem right now. Twenty twenty-five might be a wet year, and we might all get flooded. All our houses could be ruined. And the reason why this Hix Council wants it is because it's in our backyard, and we are passionate to get it taken care of, because it affects us. And you just said that this is one of thirteen drainage districts. You don't care, because if you did, you would have scheduled a drainage district hearing by now. It's been made December tenth, here we are January fourteenth, not one thing has happened. Nothing, not a classification, not an assessment, not an engineer appointed, not an engineer doing a survey, nothing. So, yeah, I'm passionate, because the Salix City Council would actually do something.
All right, thank you for that, all right, anyone else? I will call Mr. Yocum here in a minute on the phone here, Greg, you want to go?
Do you have him too?
Yeah, let me, let me just call him, and I'll just pull him up.
Hello.
Hello, hey, hi, Liam, Liam, excuse me, Leo, this is Dan Vinter, I've got you on speakerphone here, so.
All right.
I'm going to let you do your three minutes, if, just for public comment, okay? So I'm going to hold you up to the microphone here, so go ahead.
You bet, thank you, and good afternoon. Today, the supervisors are being asked to turn the Salix Drainage District over to the city. I personally would like to see it remain in the control of the county supervisors if for no other reason than to have continuity and transparency. The drainage accessibility problem began in late twenty twenty or early twenty-one, and it has had two different mayors address it, and more than half of the city council has turned over in that time. This is where I think things get lost in the process, because experienced individuals get transitioned out. If the supervisors do not want to remain in control of this, then I believe the other solution might be to consider the drainage district set up in a trusteeship. One person from the city, one from the annexed landowners that, or the landowner is not living in the city, and an at-large county landowner. I think this would bring a lot of experience to the table and people that would commit to being willing to serve for a longer duration of time. I'm in the Farmers Drainage District, and if I have concerns, I can call one of the trustees and the issue is looked into, or I'm told that it's already been reported and will be resolved. A drainage issue in one area always affects someone in another area. And that's why we need to have experience and continuity managing this district. So my first choice would be for the supervisors to maintain control. If that doesn't happen, then I would like to see a district trustee formed, which will give each individual that is taxed a form of representation. If the city has control of the district, that annexed farmland will not have any representation with regards to decisions that will be made pertaining to drainage. I still trust we, we have the drainage set up to turn a new leaf, but still, this contract that we have of six thousand dollars a year for five years, all of a sudden, they said, we've got an agreement. But this was the agreement that was proposed three years ago. It is no different than that. So it was a lack of transparency and a lack of willingness to work together that got us to this spot right now. So I ask either trusteeship, or the county should maintain control. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Leo. All right, anyone else from the public that has to speak to this item?
Greg Yocum, sixteen twenty-nine Two Hundred Seventieth Street, Salix. Drainage is a big concern for everyone, whether it's in a city, a rural development area, or just straight agricultural land. The Salix Drainage District was formed. straight agricultural land. The Salix Drainage District was formed to help the City of Salix with their drainage into the Farmers Drainage District. With that being developed, the Salix Drainage District being formed, it also included farmland south and west of town that I own, and my dad Leo Yocum's owns. Also, there are four or five houses on the west, and then a abandoned gas station that are part of that. If the city has control, the land, the landowners that don't live in the city have no say in what happens. Things, obviously, get heated, emotions get control of people. I believe it'd be in the best interest for the city and its residents, and the remaining landowners in the newly-formed Drainage District, that the board of supervisors keep control of it. In another five years, there, we're gonna be, the district is gonna be in talks with the Farmers Drainage District. And that happened, that's been happening the last three years, and they finally came to terms. I would recommend that the supervisors keep control. I recommend to vote no to transferring the control of the Salix Drainage District to the city, and let a trusteeship, or you guys control that. And I do believe, you guys do care about the county, you do care. You guys cared about the Horton Slough District when five or six, or, no, it was probably ten years ago, when there was wanting changes with that. You guys stepped up and said no to that. So, I would like to thank you guys for your time, and if you have any questions, yes.
I have a question. What are your thoughts, sir, on annexation, as far as into Salix City Limits, and/or representation on a, it's been mentioned to have a trusteeship?
Correct.
As far as your perspective on that, personally?
Uh, personally, the, so, Salix City proper is about eighty-two acres. I own fifty-three acres and a forty-two acre piece on the southwest of Salix, so about ninety-five acres is what I own. That is already, that's already in the city limits, I do believe. Those, my two pieces are already in the city limits. My dad has seventy acres south of that, that is not in the city limits, and then the four houses along the north road are not in the city, but they're all in the Drainage District. So, I, you know, with, with me, if I have, you know, if, if I have an issue that wants to be taken care of, and I don't, you know, like it, and, and I'm not happy with it, how, how is my complaint handled? I can't vote anybody from the City of Salix. I can't run for a city council position, because I don't live there. I can't vote for anything that the city is controlling. If the city controls it, I don't have any vote on, you know, what happens, because I don't have any, I don't have a say, and the city matters. So, I, that's why I think if, you know, you have a trusteeship, and you have just, you know, whether it's a city person, a city councilman, or, and, you know, the, the landowners as, as part of that trusteeship, I don't know how legally how all that works, but, you know, that's how I would envision a fair and way to do it.
I guess, open question, is there a plan for individuals on a trusteeship? It doesn't sound like there is.
Well, what I was gonna add, and Joshua can correct me if I'm wrong, but we can't, the board can't set up a trusteeship. They would have to, a landowner within the district would have to petition to create one. And then, I just wanted to correct something that Leo said about creating a trusteeship of like a demographic of like a rural, a non, like an at-large, and maybe Joshua or Brian, if they're listening, can correct, but I don't believe we can do that. I think it's gotta be kinda geographically, through the district. But, that would be my question, Greg, is that we cannot bring a trusteeship that can't come from us, so it would have to be either you or somebody else in the district would wanna have, would have to petition.
Correct, okay, yep.
Joshua, is that correct?
Well, I don't wanna step on Brian's toes. I know he's on the line with us, and I haven't been a part of this process all the way through, and so maybe Brian could clarify that for us. And I, I believe Brian represents the board of supervisors in this matter, and he can correct me if I'm wrong. I, I do have an understanding of what it takes to transfer to trustees, but I'll defer to Brian at this point.
Thank you. Patrick's correct. It would require a petition by the, by the landowners. And I apologize that I was stuck in court all day today, and so I didn't have that up in front of me, but there are specific requirements in the code that lay out the number of landowners that are required to do so. And so, if, if you look at 468.501, the petition must be signed by a majority of the persons, including corporations owning land within the district assessed for benefits. The other part of that, and where this falls in a bit of a gray area, I think, is that the statute 468.500 indicates that in any drainage or levy district in which the original construction has been completed and paid for by bond issuer otherwise, it may be placed under the control and management of a board of trustees. The question I have is, has that actually occurred? And if there is contemplated that there is construction of improvements in the district that are envisioned, but not yet completed and paid for, I think there's some question legally as to whether a board of trustees can petition the, the board of supervisors to have control transferred. So, that, that part of it, there's a little bit of a gray area there for me on that, on that topic.
So, I mean, as a question to that, you know, nobody has been, obviously, you know, somebody made the mention that there wasn't, well, Dave said that there wasn't supposed to be any construction work done, as, you know, in talking to, that was brought, you mentioned that.
So, what I said was, there was nothing scheduled at this time, according to when I talked to Patrick.
Okay, so, obviously, I, there's probably work that needs to be done, but I, I guess my question is, I haven't received any information that, that they're going to start anything. So, I guess, as part of the district, I haven't been informed on if they're, they plan on doing any work, work, so, I guess that's my concern. So, anything else, or should I?
Yeah, so I would clarify that, that that's what I said, there's nothing scheduled at this time, and with due respect to what we do as elected officials, we obviously know we're not gonna make everybody happy, and hopefully this, you know, stays down here, you know, or a little tussle right there. But, I never actually had a phone call that I see from you. I had no voicemail from you, and I will give you one of my cards. I have all respect for county residents, and I'm gonna look out for the best interests of everyone involved, and that's what I'm gonna do in this situation, and I will do going forward as well.
Patrick, you wanna come up any, to speak to the scheduling of, of improvements, or?
Yeah, Patrick Brown, we're in, Kim, our district engineer. Just to, Dave, just kinda to clear that, he had called me, and then I just mentioned there are no plans currently scheduled. You know, I'm not actively in design of, you know, say digging a ditch, if you will, or something to that, and that's what, where that came from. As far as what, what, I guess I'm gonna highlight a little bit from Brian, you know, regarding trusteeship, you know, that is certainly an option, but that requires, I think, half, if I'm not mistaken, Brian, so we'd have, you know, the landowners. If you think of Salix, and how many landowners you have, to get half the people to sign it, that's a, that's a tall order. All things are possible, you know, but that is something to kinda weigh in, you know, think if that's even viable, you know, I guess petitions can happen, but some for elected office, you know, some of us just ran, you know, how long it took you to get those signatures. Imagine getting half of your constituents. Would take a little bit of time. The other thing I would just kinda highlight, you know, taxation representation, I, I think, and I don't wanna make enemies, but maybe that's what I'm here maybe to do, but we all sit on, I'm gonna use you, Dave, as that, you know, District Five, this is kinda your area, not to pick on you, if you will, but that doesn't, if you, if I call you, doesn't mean you're gonna vote that way, you know? It, it just means that I have a voice, you know, one that personally bothers me is Western Iowa Tech. Their levy rates are just unreal for percentages. I have taxation without representation, and it drives me nuts, because here's Western Iowa Tech, twenty percent, fifteen percent, thirty percent. It's like, I've never, you know, I'm hardly ever on campus, other than for, you know, there's that disaster center. You know, I've been in that, that building, that's it, and it's like my taxes. So, I understand the frustration of taxation, taxation without representation. At the same token, you do have some local control, like, I don't even know who's on that board. You know, here you do have a council, you can at least come in front of a mic, if you will, at Salix, and say, I'm angry, fix this. Do you know what I'm saying? At least you do know the people. So, I think that lends some credence, if you choose to go to the, to give it to the City of Salix. It isn't like it's some board somewhere, you know, that you don't know. You will know all of them. Whether you agree, you know, I, I may vote for Dave, but Dave may vote against me, and welcome to, you know, your job as supervisor. Sometimes you have to vote, and, you know, not everyone's on your side, more times than not, even a CIP. I'm sure everyone, someone's not gonna be happy their project isn't funded, as we discussed earlier. So, I guess that's kinda what I have, that's maybe not engineering, but just some things to maybe clear up. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Patrick.
So, yeah, along those lines with, with what Patrick just said, there's a lot of good points, and, and I can appreciate Kevin's comments, when he said, we haven't hired an engineer, we have done a classification, and, and that was my point of why I don't want this body to run this, because we have a lot of things to do, right? And, and a lot of that was either Mark or Laura is gonna end up doing the brunt of that work, and they have a lot of things to do. So, really, it comes down to, but I also believe, what it comes down to is that if we do have taxpayers that want to petition for a trusteeship, that I think that they have that right. However, it's not an open-ended amount of time either, because there is, we do need to get the ball moving on this. And so, I might put Greg on the spot, you know, since you're here, if, if that's something that you'd like to pursue, I'd be fine moving to table this for sixty days, instead of hard, a hard date, you know, and we'll try to work with Joshua, Brian, and get anything that you need for that, whether you're successful or not, because we can't go out and stump one way or the other. I mean, that's just, that's nothing we can do. But, I don't want this four years from now that it come, you know, we're still waiting to see if this petition comes back, you know, so I, I'm trying to be fair to all sides. And I'm just one vote, but it's mentally, I'm just trying.
Right, so, what, what you're asking is, A, hand it over to the City Salix, or B, trusteeship? That's what you're asking?
That's my personal opinion, yes.
Okay, all right, and, I mean, if, if, if that's your, if, you know, the board of supervisors handling it is complete, absolutely not.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't think we need to handle this. I'm, I believe we should decentralize government more and more, and if, let the local mayors, and more, you know, local citizens run stuff. So, I agree with Mark. We don't need, we have enough to handle, and, so that would be my preference.
So, I, I guess the, I, the, I need fifty per, you know, to get a petition, you'd fifty percent of the landowners, or fifty percent of the land ownership in the district?
The way the statute reads.
I believe the code, I believe the code says, oh, go ahead, Josh.
Well, hopefully, we're gonna say the same thing.
I, I'd like to hear them both.
Yeah, and, and I don't have it in front of me, but there is a, there is a recent court case on it as well. I believe it's landowners, rather than, than ownership.
And I'll second that. He's correct.
Excellent.
Well, that's good.
Okay.
Some things are black and white when it comes to the law.
Go ahead, Matthew.
Is this a, can this be changed? I mean, if the board chooses to hand it to the city or to create this, allow this trusteeship to be formed, can that be changed easily?
I, I think, as, what I've, well, I guess you, the lawyers can talk to that.
Yeah, the, the, I believe that the code does take into account the idea that a trusteeship can be terminated. I'd have to go back, I've not dealt with that, and I hadn't researched it for purposes of today's meeting. I don't know that the same provision is there as it relates to a city, and I haven't looked at that issue. If Josh knows that off the top of his head, I'll, I'll let him speak to that, but I do think that there is a provision that relates to trustees turning it back over.
And that makes sense. I mean, I can make that make sense in my mind, that you could dissolve a trusteeship, but probably not a, a city if it was handed over, so it's probably correct.
I think there is a provision where landowners can approach the city as well with that same petition, and, and the statute references the same process that applies to the board of supervisors. So, I, I think that that can happen well in the hands of city control by the same means.
Yeah, so I, I managed to scroll through and, and found it, Josh. It's 468.533, relates to a petition or canvas, and it indicates that a petition can be submitted, asking that a district that is under the management of trustees be placed back under the management of a board of supervisors. That's required to be signed by a majority of the people owning land within the district. Or, and it does provide the or, own more than one-half the acres of the land.
Dan?
Dan Heisler, Conservation Director. I guess there's one resource, I think, that maybe the supervisors and, if you're gonna look at doing the landowners, is John Torbert. I'm sure some of you are familiar with John. John is, I work with him on the Iowa Ag Mitigation Board, he's on the board with me, and he's with the Iowa Association of Drainage Districts for the State of Iowa. So, I think he'd be an excellent resource. He is very knowledgeable on this, and I think he would give you some good information. So, if you haven't talked to him, or you need his number, I can provide that, so.
Kim, go ahead.
Kevin Nelson, again. If Greg or anyone else wants to get fifty percent of the landowners' signatures at any time, between now and infinity, feel free to do it. But, the City of Salix shouldn't have to continue to wait after waiting over two years to get the control of the district. We can make decisions and get things moving, because clearly, you guys have better things to do, and it won't fall through the cracks with the City of Salix. And then, if slash when that ever happens, where fifty percent of the landowners ever gets that petition together, then that can be considered. But, I'm gonna say right now that the City of Salix is not gonna pony up any money to help with that petition. The City of Salix council members made it very clear on who they want control of the district to have. We're not paying a single penny for that petition.
And I have just a clarifying question, maybe this is for Patrick. And forgive me, I was on the criminal side back in the December meeting, so I wasn't here during that, but I did look at the report that was approved by the supervisors in December, and part of the report that's approved, there's a section on basically the work to be done, and opinion of probable costs. So, all that I saw in there was engineer costs, and I didn't see any other costs as far as work that's, that's to be done as part of the approval of that report. Tonight, there's been a lot of references to, there's work that needs to be done, but I guess my question is, is there work that was part of the establishment of the Drainage District that's, that the supervisors are currently obligated to perform?
So, there is, again, there is no work currently scheduled. There is work that needs to be done over a period of time, you know, then maybe two or five years. What, I mean, a sea, you know, I think at this point, I'm looking to get to a position as their engineer to. engineer, to, where we have governing board, you know, whether it's the five of you, and wanna sit down, okay, great, but a governing board that's stable, you know, and then we go look at, okay, this area is flooding, this ditch, this pump needs to be replaced, this culvert, you know, um, on the Farmers Drainage District side, what kind of started this whole thing, um, and that goes to letting in February third, is the, um, clean out of the first three miles of lateral H, which is where Salix water, you know, at this point is pumped, but Salix's water is pumped into lateral H, and there's been a lot of problems within that lateral on the county side, with the, um, the roads sloughing, you know, into the lateral, and Drainage District trying to keep it even flowing, and so, that, that goes to bit here in February, and so, that is the first phase, there has been some discussions within the Farmers Drainage District of doing a Phase Two, um, uh, to continue that to Salix, but in some ways, kind of wanna see, that's a Phase Two, that's a several years down the road, so, to answer your question, Joshua, my report just had engineering for classification, to bring the thing, you know, basically to completion as far as construction, operational, um, and that is it, and then sit down and look at your, we don't call them CIPs, but look at your program, and go, what are you going to, to do over the next two, I hate to use the word improvement, because that gets me in trouble, but, what are you going to do to make the district, um, operational and in a satisfactory manner, does that?
Yes, thank you.
So, Joshua, did you say that you think there is an avenue where, if we handed it off to the City of Salix, that petitioners within that district could petition the Board of Supervisors to take it back from the city?
Uh, yes, I don't have the code section in front of me, I'm just trying to scroll through on my phone here, but I believe in the, in four sixty-eight, we're talking about city control, or the petition by landowners, um, the landowners can petition, whether it's the supervisors in control, or it's the city, uh, that's in control, the petition is, um, I forget if it's made to the governing body, or to the county auditor, but the, the county auditor does get involved at some point, if a petition is received, um, but my understanding is, it can be, whether it's supervisor control, or city control, the landowners always have that option, as far as, as long as they can get together that majority of the landowners.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, based on the fact that there's been, this has been pushed several weeks and months, and the City Council has taken steps and secured, um, I believe, uh, some local support, this, the Salix City Council is accountable to a lot of people, and, based upon this knowledge, that the signatures and petition route is open regardless, I, I see of the two options here, uh, the petition option is, is still on the table, but that's not necessarily ready to go, um, I do see the Salix City Council option is ready to go, and there's been talk of work that can be done, um, work that's anticipated to be discussed in public meetings, which I think is the correct format, and why we've been, um, complimented on the fact that we have our open meetings, so, based on this, um, I will move the resolution.
Okay, and I'll, I'll second that, based upon this new information, I was, I agree the city should be able to run it, I also agree that every citizen has the right, representation has the right to, um, to petition their government, but if, if this is allowable and can be done, I, I agree, it's, it can still happen, um, and so, I would second it, so, um, sorry, so with that, all right, motion by Yang, second by Bittenger, are any other discussion?
I would just like to say something about this, um, I, it's hard for me to comment on this, because I haven't seen this property, or the, the system, I'm new to the board, of course, um, but I think everybody here at this board cares about every individual in Woodbury County, cares about their homes, cares about their property, and, you know, that's why we ran for this position, because we care for people of Woodbury County, and so, um, I'm glad that this can move forward, and let, uh, others vote on this, perhaps they can create a petition, but, um, I would like to, uh, take a look at this in the near future, maybe even tonight, I'm heading to Des Moines, so I think I'll drive over there and take a look at this myself.
All right, so, all right, Mark?
Yeah, I was, I was just gonna say that, um, if Greg or anybody else was going to go out and start tomorrow with a petition, whether it was to create a trusteeship, it would be the same parameters to take it back from the council, but what we don't know is if they, if we vote to give it to the council tonight, and if you guys start doing work, and everybody's happy with your work, and there's no problems, there may not be a petition anyway, might be, might not be, that's for those people to decide, um, but either way, I guess, to me, if we, if we vote this through, and the petition option is still there, it does not stop any progress, and it's still the same threshold regardless, and if we get to that level, and it comes back, then we know that, okay, well, we got over half the people don't want the council to have it, so then we'll have to do something else, and that might happen, or might not, but, at least in the meantime, go ahead, Brian.
This is Brian, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but you, you touched on a point that I was going to make, which is, the code does provide that if control is transferred to the City Council, that it is still eligible to be moved into, uh, a Board of Trustees by petition, so, four sixty-eight point three twenty-seven, uh, specifically addresses that, that topic, so, when you talk about the idea that if, if a petition was wanted or desired by the majority of the landowners, uh, they could, they could then seek, not only to possibly return it to the control of the Board of Supervisors, but they could also, um, seek to have a private Board of Trustees as well.
Okay. And that could be an option too, actually, then, if, um, if over half the people in the district want the board to have it, and they get half the signatures, that I'd say that we're probably gonna, you know, I mean, but, in, in all seriousness, then we're probably gonna have to run the thing, so, but that would be for the people in that, uh, district to decide, and there's avenues to do that, so, I think, given that, I will be supportive of that, and will be paying attention to whatever the people in that district wanna do going forward, and if it's a change away from the City Council, whether do a trusteeship, or the Board of Supervisors, we'll, I'll do what I can to make that happen, so.
Okay, all right, thank you for those comments, go ahead, Dave.
And I expect, you know, that you're gonna get your vote for, for it to get, uh, turned over to the City of Salix, and I imagine that Salix, and the good faith of everybody involved, will do what's right for everybody involved, um, just as Mr. Yocum signed the piece of paper to help you guys get this Drainage District in good faith as well.
Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay.
Nay.
All right, all right, uh, motion passes four to one, Dietrich in opposition, all right, motion passes, all right, on to, uh, number thirteen, reports on committee meetings, does anyone, uh, late liaison assignments are out, and so, uh, for new board members, you'll see those in the backup, in the Gazette Agenda, so, I'll help you with those, if you have any questions, see any one of us over here, we can help you with that, um, any other board meetings, committee meetings?
Yeah, I had, uh, quite a few last week, we had, um, Starcom, and Emergency 911 Board Meetings on Wednesday, Starcom during the day, Emergency 911 at night, we approved the budget, uh, Starcom went down a little bit, which, uh, for you guys down there, um, Starcom deals with our telecommunications for emergency services, um, and, and law enforcement in the tri-state area, and it's split by different municipalities, so, uh, Sioux City, Sergeant Bluff, uh, Union County, stuff like that, so, their budget went down a little bit, the Emergency 911 budget went up a little bit, um, part of that was, or a majority of that, was because we have a, a 911 tower at Climbing Hill, behind the Emergency Services Building, that they thought the county was paying insurance on, and the county thought 911 Board was paying insurance on, and there was nobody paying any insurance, and so, it is now insured, and it is under the, uh, Emergency 911 Board that is taking care of that, so, um, we had a Conservation Board Meeting on Thursday, um, the, I think the biggest thing out of that is the Conservation Board, um, gave direction to Dan and his staff to get some estimates on building a, um, concession stand, and a, kind of a rental booth at Little Sioux Park, so, this is something we did at Browns Lake two years ago, it just got, and if, if you guys haven't been down there, it's, it's a beautiful structure, but we have seasonal staff in there that, I mean, they sell snacks, goodies, that kind of stuff, but they also rent out equipment for people to use on the water, and it's been a bigger hit than we ever imagined, um, the staff actually had to go and buy more equipment, because it was always rented, and so, we anticipate, because of the number of visitors we get to Little Sioux Park, that it will be an even bigger hit there, and that park is set up a lot different than Browns Lake, so there's some different things that we can do, some different equipment we could potentially rent out, and so, um, everyone's excited, I think it'll be a great addition to the park, and so, they're gonna be looking for that, to have it done yet this year, so that'd be a. That'd be a great thing.
I would just like to comment that Mark's a real good lia- liaison for us, or lia- liaison, right, however you pronounce that, I'm tired, anyway, he has good out-of-the-box ideas, we never thought about renting bikes, there's a trail that goes into town, and there, and there's, you know, there's, I don't know how many miles of road inside the park, so, he brought that up to the board, and my board's looking at that, and considering that, um, maybe we purchase a few bikes, and rent those, or find somebody that's doing that in the area, and maybe bring them in, so, we just, we thank Mark's vision, and his willing to speak up and give his ideas to us, so the board really accepted that, so.
Thanks, Mark.
Yeah, so, um, and then Friday, I went to, Emergency Services had, Climbing Hill had a staff meeting, uh, first of the year, so I went to that, and they had a good recap, and I was glad I did, um, Dawn put together a 2024 recap, and I'll try to maybe get this scanned and sent out, but it was really interesting, as, as far as their call volume, and, let's see here, for the year, they had eleven hundred and seventy-one calls, that they went on, out of Climbing Hill, it's about three a day, they had, uh, three different days where they had nine calls in a single day, the busiest day of the week, as far as call volume, is on Friday, for whatever reason, their busiest time of the day for call volume is eleven in the morning, uh, but it was, it was good, they had this all broken down by, um, whether it was, was a sick call, was it falls, trouble breathing, traffic accidents, chest pain, stroke, so it was really fascinating to see that, they've obviously, you know, three calls a day, they're pretty busy, um, and then they had, they dispatched on fifty-seven fire calls, and so, one of the things that they do out there is, um, our local departments, our, for our volunteers, it's very expensive for them to have the oxygen equipment for, like, structured fires, so the county has a tanker truck that has the oxygen, that we can refill tanks, and supply them with tanks, and so anytime there's a structured fire, we go, so that we can provide oxygen for those guys, and then we also have, uh, grass fighting, firefighting equipment, and so, they had been on, uh, ten different, uh, grass fire calls, and some controlled burns, and other things, so, I was glad I went, they, uh, we talked about some of their CIP priorities while we were out there, and, um, they're looking forward to another good year out there, and they're appreciative of the, uh, tuck pointing work, and we're working on getting some new, uh, carpet in the employee lounge area, I think that there are outside door mats in nicer shape than the carpet in there, so Kenny's been working on that, but, I'll, I've taken up enough time with committee reports, so, I'll turn it back over to you, Dan.
Oh, thank you, Supervisor Nelson, not a problem, anyone else, any committee reports?
Yeah, I just, not a report, but I was able to meet with, uh, Jean Logan today, um, the, they're gonna have a meeting on the sixteenth, but, of course, I'll be in Des Moines, so, I just wanted to go into her office and talk to her, introduce myself, and, um, uh, we're gonna try to meet next week, uh, just privately, between Jean and I, um, sounds like they have a new, uh, trailer, that, uh, it's either a freezer, or refrigerated trailer, that they're gonna use to go around to different communities, to try to provide, um, you know, giving out meats, um, to, um, some of the people in different communities, and also, different food items, so, hopefully, we can meet next week.
All right, thank you, only updates that I have is, uh, Siouxland District Health, and WC, WCICC, we just had budget review, and then just Rolling Hills Mental Health Region, those are winding down, those will be dissolved here by the end of this fiscal year, uh, for the new state realignment, and so, they're just making, uh, making sure service providers get, uh, final bills in, and claims, all that, so, not a whole lot to report, uh, there, so with that, on to number fourteen, any sensitive concerns? I have a couple, yeah.
Um, 'cause you only get three minutes, I thought, if you were ready, just in case, like.
All right, Michelle, do we need to receive these?
Yes.
Okay, uh, motion to receive, second, all right, motion by Bittenger, second by Nelson, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes five zero.
How do you do this, young lady, you push this button or something?
They're on, yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay, sorry, my name is Robin Shira, I live at three eleven East Washington Street in Outpoint, um, South Dakota, and although I worked in the engineering field for forty-plus years, after graduating from South Dakota School of Mines and Technology with dual engineering degrees, I was recently offered an accepted customer service job with the Internal Revenue Service in Des Moines, Iowa, first, I would like to say that I appreciate all that you do, since I was a previous county commissioner myself, in fact, I was awarded the two thousand and eight United States County Official of the Year, from the National Association of County Officials, so I pride myself on adhering to local, county, state, and federal regulations, since January is National Human Trafficking Prevention Month, as you, um, proclaimed last month, last meeting I saw, um, I realize that Woodbury County Supervisor's Board Budget may already be set, although I'm understanding the CIPs are not, but I would like to request that perhaps next budget cycle, that funds be dedicated to the education of high school students, by the County Sheriff's Department concerning the new generation of human trafficking in our schools, we all think of human trafficking as we see it on TV, where illegal immigrants are brought to the United States and are threatened, both them and their families back home, and tortured into performing work for long, arduous hours, for very little money, if at all, while being kept in confined quarters, and others being human trafficked, but, there is a whole new generation of human trafficking, existing within the United States of America, as well as within our own Woodbury County, Iowa, would it surprise you that human trafficking occurs with human traffickers under the guise of being classmates with other chi- with our children in high school? They will follow our kids through high school, and then on to college, and finally, to their new employer, once graduated, you might ask why, or what purpose, well, our high school kids, now armed with a college education, will now make a good substantial income at their new employer, unfortunately, our kids are not aware that their new income can very easily be taken by the human traffickers, who have hacked into their bank account, and company pay stub data, most online now, leading our children to believe that they are making less than what they are truly making, since their pay stubs show less that, than the actual bank deposits, these criminals are capable of making, um, uh, excuse me, making their pay stubs show less than the actual bank deposits, um, sorry about that, I must have redid that twice, pay stub amount without the bank accounts, both hard copy and online, is what deposited, instead of what was truly deposited, and of course, the criminals pocket the difference, this process is also used to hack into their credit cards, retirement funds, and life insurance funds, supposedly, how that works for the credit card fraud, is that these criminals charge items to our children's credit cards, which of course are not visible on their credit card statements, both on paper and online, similar to their actual income, in addition, they steal portions, if not of all the credit card payments made, and the criminals are also able to show charges when our children either get their bill, or pay online, that are actually higher than what our children actually purchased, that way, these criminals can steal the money over the actual charge, as far as the retirement funds and life insurance, well, the criminals just steal those funds, but have our children think that they're still there, but on paper, only hard copy statements and online, well, if that's not enough, these human traffickers then hack into our children's cell phones, work phones, personal laptops, as well as their company laptops, the purpose of such is to hack into our children's employee financial data, and you guessed it, to steal those funds in a similar manner as that of their personal funds, it must not be very difficult to lead employers to believe that funds are truly there on paper, when they are not, who would do such a thing, or is cap- have capabilities to perform these types of criminal acts, well, would it surprise you, in order of federal government, your taxpayer dollars at work hired them to do so, they are terrorists slash criminals, under the guise of being IRS contract investigators.
Mrs. Robin?
Yeah, three minutes, am I three minutes done?
About thirty seconds, yeah, why don't you just.
Okay, so, to summarize, um, now that the criminals have the funds of their children's, they go to their employer, they steal from their employer, and it can be done by various ways, um, and then. And then they have them fired and/or have them, they lose their job in some form and fashion. And by doing that, then we're back into the process once again. And they keep them in debt, so to speak, and not help letting them get jobs until they find a prolifer, a fluent company that they would like them to then work for. And then they start the cycle once again. I appreciate that you all recognize the Human Trafficking Month. And I would encourage you to have your sheriff look into this type of human trafficking. It's a new generation with new technology. Thank you.
Thank you. Name and address?
Dennis DeFault, 1519 South Olive. Over the weekend, a situation occurred at Lake, Lake Forest, where a fellow was released, or released from the LEC, wandered into the community up there, broke into a gal's house, and there, and so he is rearrested again. So I know this probably isn't just your responsibility. I think it's part of the city, part of the county. But something has to be done. You can't drop those guys off out there and let them fend for themselves. They got two or three miles to, and some, some don't have family to come pick them up. So I understand the guy's wrong, but still, I mean, something has to be done to get those guys transported somewhere to where they, you know, like, well, they were across the street, maybe had more access to transportation. There's no bus route out there. I imagine Hubert could probably go out there, but you know, maybe he's, they don't have credit. Don't know. But anyway, just wanted to bring up that point that it's in the news, people have hit it. But before it gets too big, it's probably time to get some action.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I got a call from somebody that lives in that mobile home park today. And we had a nice long chat on the way into Sioux City. During the LEC authority meeting today, Commissioner Moore and Dan Moore and Sheriff Chad Sheehan talked about some of this stuff. So right now, the, Dan Moore and Matthew, and I think going to be potentially Dan going forward, are still looking at transportation options. And Chad Sheehan said that roughly 80% of the folks that they release do have rides.
Sure.
And, and the sheriff's office is doing all that they can, you know, giving them phone calls. They've let some stay for hours, you know, if someone couldn't give a ride till they got off work or whatever. They've been very accommodating to the best of their ability to help these, you know, people find a ride. And so what's tough for the city is they're getting data, okay, how many are getting released, how many of those actually need rides. And then they're trying to get data back from the judges and courts on how many folks are coming out there, whether it's witnesses, jurors, that sort of thing that are lining up their own transportation, whereas they would normally use public transit.
Right.
So, and because one of the things that this gentleman said that called me today is he said, well, why wasn't this worked on before? Well, you, you can't have that data until you're up and running.
Understood.
And, and Chad Sheehan did say today that he had brought up several years ago on working some of the stuff. But again, some of the stuff you have to do now. And so whether we can go to some sort of voucher system or a bus route, you know, the county, we, we do not run a transit system. We do not own a bus, you know. But the city's looking at a two front, which I understand from their standpoint, if, if we only need five people that need bus out of there in a day's time, like, we can't justify a quarter million, three quarter million dollar bus route for that. So then, but then that's where like a voucher system would come in. And, and today Chad Sheehan talked about, well, maybe the county pays transportation vouchers for county inmates, folks that were arrested by the sheriff's office. And then the city would pay vouchers for those brought in by Sioux City PD. So what happened was very unfortunate. And it's not fallen on any of us that we just, that we want that to continue to happen. But as the city is getting their data, they've, they're working through their things. Nothing has stopped. There's still progress being made to try to fix that. But one of the things that Dan Moore and Chad Sheehan did say today is we could have 50 transportation options, but we cannot make them use them.
No, I understand.
And because that was, some people were saying, well, you guys need to force them to give them a ride. Well, we can't, you know, once they're, once they're kicked out, they are a free citizen of the United States, you know. So, but an option would be helpful, right? So we are working on that. And I appreciate you talking about this because I watched, you know, I turned on six o'clock news last night. They were talking about it. And I had a nice call with this guy today. And so it's not lost on us. There is progress being made. And they're just figuring out the dollars and cents of what's going to be the best option, whether it's a voucher or a bus.
Perfect. All right. Thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Sir, I didn't catch your name for the record, please.
What's that?
I didn't catch your name. Can you repeat that?
Dennis DeFault.
Okay, thank you.
D U F A U L T. William DeFault is my dad.
Thank you.
Seriously, he is, but definitely William DeFault.
Thanks, sir. All right. Any board concerns? No?
I kind of just talked about that from the LEC. But we'll have another LEC meeting in two weeks, and there'll be a joint closed session for that. And my intentions are, I'd like to get with Supervisor Dietrich, Supervisor Carper independently in the next two weeks and, and try to bring you up to date on the LEC project and some of the potential litigation, some of that stuff. So I'll try to get with you guys over the next two weeks. Thank you.